Thanks, everybody for joining us today for the first of our statewide sessions related to the Medi-Cal Community-Based Organizations Partnership Development Network. We are so thrilled to have you all today, and I know folks are still joining, but we're gonna kick us off just with some backgrounding and objectives as we get started here. So just as background, the two organizations that are hosting this event, Our Health Begins and Our Health Group, we are the project lead on this project. My name is Sabina Devaraja. I'm Managing Director here at Health Begins. You can see a little bit more about us here. We're a national mission-driven consulting and training forum that really focuses on the social and structural drivers of health equity. Our project partner on this project is Aurora Health Group and really grateful to them for their support. And also, of course, the support of the California Healthcare Foundation, who is helping fund and with their generous support, making this possible. So before we get too far into anything, I do want to turn it over to you, Carolina, if you could share a couple of words with us.
Great. Thank you so much, Sabina. So greetings, everyone. I want to thank you so much for joining us today. Before I turn it over to our panelists, I thought I would share just a little bit about the California Healthcare Foundation and why we are engaged in this important work supporting partnerships between managed care plans and CBOs. I think many of you are probably familiar with the foundation. Just briefly, the California Healthcare Foundation is a healthcare philanthropy. We're based out of Oakland and Sacramento, and we are dedicated to advancing meaningful, measurable improvements in the way the healthcare delivery system provides care to the people of California, especially those with low incomes and those whose needs are not well-served by the status quo. One out of three Californians lives in or near poverty because people with low incomes face the biggest health burden and the greatest barriers to care. Our priority at the foundation is to make sure they have access to high-quality care. We recognize the historical and continued oppression experienced by Black, Latinx, Asian, Pacific Islander, Indigenous people, and other racial and ethnic groups. That is why we also work to create a healthcare system that is designed to redress and not perpetuate the inequities that too many of our fellow Californians face. One of the best opportunities that California has to advance that work is to strengthen Medi-Cal, which is a cornerstone of California's safety net. Our work in Medi-Cal is focused on getting people covered, making care just, and delivering better care. Over the past several years, we recognized that as the state started to manifest its vision for CalAim and the future of Medi-Cal, community-based organizations were going to play a critical role. And yet, we were hearing from so many people that they needed support to make that vision a reality. So Help Again started a conversation with many of you. We wanted to understand from the perspective of CBOs and managed care plans what you needed to be able to more effectively partner with one another. We recognize that there are a great many levers that need to get pulled to enhance these partnerships from policy to payment to practice. And we are grateful to be with you on this journey, which, when it comes down to it, is about a shared commitment to help equity. The session today is part of a broader portfolio of work at CHCF focused on providing TA and support to CBOs in the context of CalAim. Today, we're going to discuss one critical and tactical piece of managed care plan and CBO relationships, contracting costs and payment strategies. I am going to turn it over to our wonderful presenters on that topic. Lisa Chan Swain is the CEO of Transform Health, Dr. Rishi Manchanda, CEO of Help Begins, and Cheryl Winter, a Senior Program Manager at the Corporation for Supportive Housing. A big thanks to them for sharing their expertise with us today.
Thanks so much, Carolina, and we're eager to hear from all of them today. I'll do a little bit of backgrounding on agenda and what we can expect from the session today before we turn it over. So as we've already gotten started here, I'll do a quick intro on our presenters. We'll go through some session background and objectives before I turn it over to Lisa to take us through some key contracting considerations today. These are our three presenters. We're really thrilled that we can be joined by Lisa Chan Swain from Transform Health, Rishi Manchanda from Health Begins, and Cheryl Winter from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. Each really SMEs in this space and have been really advising this project in different capacities and/or, you know, we've invited to comment today on the contracting considerations. So really thrilled for you all to be able to hear from them today. We did want to just flash this slide on screen. Following the meeting, we will be sharing a recording of the session as well as slides from the session. And so thought this might be helpful in terms of, you know, getting through the acronym SUEP that we'll be embarking on a little bit together today. I don't want to go through them in detail, but just wanted to make sure that folks knew that, you know, when we're talking about DHCS, that's our State Department of Healthcare Services. We'll be using MCPs for managed care plans, CalAim. And when we're discussing community supports, you will see both community supports come up as well as ILOs. So just a quick primer. We are hoping that, you know, by the end of today's session, attendees will be able to describe the goals for this partnership network that Carolina described a bit about that you'll be able to describe key contracting considerations for CBOs in the context of partnering with managed care plans, really, and really focusing on community supports as opposed to the enhanced care management or ECM services. And then think about and understand approaches to estimating costs and revenues as well as think a little bit about payment and funding strategies through our session today. Carolina really touched on a bit of this, but the background of this project is that we realized that, you know, to realize the promise of CalAim, we needed a new approach to get together some infrastructure for CBO and managed care plan partnerships. And so looking to create strong equity-oriented partnerships, think about what structures are needed for CBOs in the space and to address the lack of coordinated CBO support. We came up with this kind of pilot. So and based on stakeholder feedback, this has been taking place over, I would say, the last year and a half in different capacities. We've learned that, you know, this pilot of a CalAim Medi-Cal CBO partnership development network is a great test to see how TA can be provided in pursuit of those partnerships. So during this Q4 of 2021 is when we're running these. Today's session is the first of two statewide sessions as part of this work, and there's also regional sessions in the four counties that you see up on screen. I just wanted to mention all of that and also to kind of, you know, make sure that folks realize that this is a TA endeavor. This is distinct from some of the other endeavors that might be happening through the state. We know in some of our sessions really understanding that division of DHCS versus what other entities are doing is helpful. And so wanted to say this was the Health Begins and Aurora Health Group's journey. Our goals in this work is really to mainly support CBOs that offer these services that will be value for CalAim and for, of course, the members of our communities that they serve. And so these are some of the goals that we're hoping to achieve through that. And that we are also hoping to support plants and plant staff as they embark on CalAim and CalAim-related efforts at the same time. So putting these on screen, we're not going to get into them in too much detail, but just wanted to make sure you had that background for the project, the TA that we're providing today. So we have some assumptions about today's audience. We're assuming that you all represent California-based CBOs and that you're either providing or planning to provide community support services through CalAim, that you're familiar with CalAim and community supports, at least at a high level, and that you're interested in partnering and building or strengthening relationships with managed care plans in your service areas. As we go forward, I think it would be great if you are able to enter any questions in chat, participate in chat. We're not able to see folks through this webinar format, so really hope that folks are able to engage via chat and also with each other in that way. So I welcome you to, at this point, you know, find your chat box, enter your name, your organization, just introduce yourselves to each other. So folks have a sense for who's on this call. And so do just want to open that up as one route for engagement. And we'll be looking at chat as well. So if you have any questions that are bubbling up for you, please feel free to put them in. We'll have time at the end certainly to address any questions. And thank you, Diane, for chatting in and taking my invitation. And we'll address questions as we can as we go throughout as well as at the end, as I was saying. The other route of engagement will be through polls. So with that, I will launch our first audience poll. And so what we are curious about is if folks have given thought to which community supports they may be interested in providing. And so that poll should be up on your screen. And so if you're able to, I'm kind of asking folks to do two things at once, enter into chat as well as enter into a poll, but hopefully this is working and I'm seeing folks enter in their poll responses. Thank you for that. We kind of, because of limitations with Zoom, we've kind of tried to pair up some of the responses together because we're only able to get 10 options in there. So while there are 14 pre-approved community supports, we've tried to lump some of them together to get a better sense of where folks are. I'll give it just one more second. We have about half of folks participating in the poll. And please select all that apply for your choices. Give it one more second here. Actually, I'll do a countdown from five or three to one and the poll here. And hope y'all can see the results of the poll. They should be on screen. It looks like a little over half of you had participated, and of those participating, 60% are interested in these housing or homeless prevention-related services. And there is about a little over a quarter of folks that are interested in the others, so the personal care and homemaker services and sobering centers. About a quarter related, interested in medically tailored meals and kind of goes down from there. So really helpful to see that spread. Thank you for that. And I'll stop sharing that poll. And we have a second poll before we get started here. And this is to kind of understand where folks are in the process. So I'm launching that poll to understand, you know, how far along are you in in the CalAim community support contracting process with managed care plans? So ranging from haven't yet started, just starting conversations. Maybe you've already started those conversations and you're waiting for a contract review. Maybe you're reviewing the contract and then if you're actively in negotiations. And if you have another category that this doesn't fit into, please feel free to enter that into chat. If you think we missed kind of something along the continuum, we'd love to learn where you might be. So I'll just give this couple more seconds here and do that kind of same countdown because our participation has been pretty steady. So I'll close this out in five, four, three, two, one. And you should be able to see the results here of the folks that have answered. It looks like a third of you, you know, haven't started yet or you've decided against contracting. And a third of you are just starting conversations with the rest kind of in the more mature stages. And I see that in the chat, Liz, you mentioned that you're somewhere in between communication started and waiting for a contract. So certainly, these options might be a little bit more black and white than what the continuum actually is, and folks might be kind of in between any of these stages. I appreciate you calling that out. And so I just wanted to set the stage with some key contracting considerations before turning it to our first presenter. And so the origin of this was that, you know, we were, as we were speaking with stakeholders and CBOs, we realized that one learning need is that folks were really hoping to speak the same language regarding contract terms. And so we had some, you know, things that were advised for CBOs to do in order to get to that point of speaking the same language as managed care plans related to contract terms. So helpful for CBOs to familiarize themselves with definitions and standard contract terms just as a baseline. And, you know, DHCS has published standard terms and conditions. We'll put that link in the chat, and it's really the basis of a lot of what the presentations that you'll hear from will rely on and will share. So the standard terms and conditions from the state are helpful starting point. But of course, there might be variations. And so we're hoping to cover those variations that folks here have seen between what has been given by the state and what's been made available and what plans are using. And really want to emphasize that it's important to be able to discuss with your partner to understand where those variations in your particular case may exist. But hoping that this conversation will give us a baseline, give us some examples of variation so that it'll be easier to have those conversations. And so these are the categories of the standard terms and conditions of provisions within the standard terms and conditions that are available from DHCS. And we'll put this link in the chat as I mentioned. And we're focusing on the four that are bolded through today's session. And before I turn it over to Lisa, who's going to talk us through these first, these three that are kind of highlighted by a box on the screen here, we did want to do one more poll to be able to get a sense for where folks are. So before I turn it to Lisa to cover these three, I do want to launch this final poll on how many contracts you're looking at. And so if folks can take this final poll. And this is really anticipating what you might be engaging in over the next year. So the timeframe is not necessarily for January 1st launch, depending on where you are. And it looks like folks are jumping in here. And so if you, I'll start doing a little bit of a countdown. I know folks are still entering responses here, but I'll do five, four, three, two, one. And share these results. So it looks like a little under half of folks responded to this one and close to 40% are not sure how many contracts you anticipate engaging with, which is great. Or we're all kind of learning here together. And it looks like about a quarter are looking at one contract. Maybe 20% are looking at three or more contracts. And so we're really running the range here in terms of what engagement might look like. So with that, I will stop sharing those results and turn it over to you, Lisa. We are so thrilled to have you here. We know you've been doing this work for a long time and have been a huge advocate for the providers as well as plans to be able to come together on this. And so we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Sabina. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can.
Let's go to the next slide, please. So it's really great to be here with you all today. And as we were thinking about what might be most useful at this stage, we thought that many of you are just in the midst of beginning to get your contracts or you're in the midst of talking to health plans. And so we wanted to just sort of start at your starting point and have a conversation about what to look for and to set some expectations about what community support providers can expect to do as part of service delivery. And so to really understand those expectations, there are two core documents that all CBOs should review. The first is DHCS's standard terms and conditions. And the reason why we're flagging this for everybody is these are standard terms and conditions that the state says every health plan contract for community supports will need to include. And so the way to look at that is it sets a base set of requirements that all community support providers will have to adhere to. We want to make sure everybody knows where to find it, and we'll be covering some of those details today. Those standard terms and conditions will be reflected in the managed care plan contracts. And so those are the contracts that interested CBOs will be receiving from Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans, and they will include both the standard terms and conditions required by the state as well as any additional requirements that they may have. And so it's really important to both understand what's are the standard terms and conditions set by the state and then any variations from those standard terms and conditions that might impact the way you put together your program and be a community support provider. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we wanted to just spend a little bit of time and talk through some of the delivery service requirements. These are the requirements that all CBOs providing community supports, regardless of type, will have to adhere to. And so we're going to walk everybody through. The first provision is that all community support providers have to deliver contracted services in accordance to DHCS's service definitions and requirements. And those are spelled out in the program guides. The state has set out a program guide specifically for ECM providers and separately for community support providers. There's a program guide as well that spells out some of these service definitions and requirements. Community support providers will also have to maintain staffing that will allow for timely, quality services to be delivered. And so some of the considerations here that we encourage CBOs really think about as they're reviewing these contracts is what does this mean in terms of your staffing? Is there a specific staffing ratio? Are there certain requirements that you'll need to meet and the staff will need to meet to be able to maintain staffing under this contract? Just something to be aware of. And beyond staffing, providers are going to be expected to meet six requirements, and they're listed below here under C. The first of which is CS providers are going to be expected to be able to accept and receive and act upon member referrals from the plans. This is the way the plans are going to tell you and send you clients to provide services to. So you'll need to understand the mechanism by which the plan is sending you referrals. Referrals, you'll need to understand how referrals are made and accepted and even consider, do you need to augment your current workflows? How are you going to integrate receipt of referrals and then assignment to your own staff? Providers are also expected to conduct outreach to the referred member as soon as possible. So this the state encourages all CS providers to conduct initial outreach within 24 hours of assignment, if possible. You'll also see here the expectation is that community support providers will also be responsive for incoming calls or outreach. And this can include maintaining phone lines that can accept voicemails 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so, you know, you might need to consider, do you have those systems in place to be able to do that? We also want to flag for everybody that the expectation is that you'll be able to coordinate with other providers in that client's care team. So providers like their primary care provider, they may be involved and be engaged in receiving mental health services through the county. And so there are opportunities for coordination, both with the community-based providers who are all touching and serving the same client. There's also an opportunity here to coordinate with the plan. Some plans have internal case managers as well as with hospital discharge planners. So thinking about continuity of care and services for clients, both within the community and as they up and down the vertical as they may need some more intensive inpatient services or other services. So being able to have a mechanism that will allow you to coordinate with other providers are going to be really important. Some providers do this through huddles. And so there are different ways of doing this, both electronically, by phone, or in person. This will be an important feature. And CS providers are also expected to comply with cultural competency, linguistic requirements, as well as non-discrimination requirements. Those will also be spelled out in your policy program guide. Next slide, please. Continuing to walk you through some of the delivery requirements. One of the provisions requires the ability to obtain and document authorizations from any assigned client. So these can be, can come in the form of patient consents or prior authorizations. And so you'll need an ability to share, collect, protect personal protective health information as well as be able to manage those consents and authorizations. There, you know, something to really be careful of is the CS providers will only be reimbursed for services that are authorized by managed care plans. And yet, you'll also have an ability to send in referrals. So if you are working with a client that you think is eligible for a community support and is with the plan as their Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan, then you can submit, as you can see here under F, to identify both additional community supports that the member may benefit from or send in referrals to the plan through in-reach so that that member may be authorized for community support. Yet, the thing I'm flagging here is the interaction with the provider reimbursement issue is if you are providing services in advance of the plan approving that referral, you may not be reimbursed for that unless the plan has, unless you have a different agreement in place. So a plan can choose to give the CS provider the authority to authorize community supports for referred clients. That will be specified in your plan contract if that is the case. So some of the key things to really think about when you're thinking about how you're going to be delivering services, how you'll be tracking those services, and ensuring that you're able to capture document, report, and invoice for those services. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. In addition to those delivery service requirements, all CS providers are going to be required to meet certain data sharing and quality oversight requirements. And so what the state has said is that the plans have to ensure that community support providers have access to demographic and administrative information that confirms the referred client's eligibility. They, the plan has to give you access to appropriate administrative, clinical, and social service information that you might need to be able to effectively provide that community support service. And also the billing information needed to support your abilities to submit invoices. So one thing to really look for in your plan contract is what is the plan's expectation and process for sharing this data with you? And if you're working with more than one plan, do their processes differ? And how do you need to account for that in your own programming? Some things to think about. Separate from that, there is a quality and oversight requirement where community support providers need to be able to acknowledge the plan will periodically conduct oversight and audits to ensure that the quality of the services rendered and ongoing compliance. So you know, you'll need to be prepared for any required reporting, audits, corrective actions, any oversight activities that the plans might need to conduct. So this was part of, you know, one of the questions you want to think about is do you have existing processes, systems in place that will support these activities? Have you planned for your internal staffing beyond frontline staff that's providing the services that can support some of these activities? And if you don't have them, you'll have to put something in place to be able to address these provisions. Next slide. So as we think about the variations from the state standards, we just wanted to spend a few minutes to talk to everybody about some of the things to look for in your plan contract. So beyond the standard terms and conditions around service delivery, quality, and data that we just reviewed, plans can require community support providers to meet additional plan-specific requirements. Justin, the list on screen is not comprehensive, but can give you a flavor of some of the things that we've been hearing from CBOs and providers that are in conversation with plans. Things like staffing ratios and staffing requirements. So, you know, a plan can specify a certain staffing ratio, like say, one to 50 or one to 25 client to staff, or they can require that certain types, you can only have certain types of providers who have undergone certain training certification or licensure requirements to provide that service. That will be spelled out in your plan contract. We'll also want to understand the payment model and how will you be paid for the type of community supports that you are contracting for? So is the plan using a fee-for-service model, a per diem, a case rate? You can also be paid a flat monthly rate per client assigned. And in the healthcare world, we call that a per-member per-month payment or a PMPM. So plans can use any of these types of payment models and it's something to watch for. We had one CBO share with us that they receive, they're in contract conversations with two plans. One plan is using a fee-for-service approach and another is using a per diem approach for the exact same service. So as you think about building your programs and how do you serve some of these plans, your billing and invoicing process will need to take into account some of these differences. A couple of other things, assignment of patients, you want to know how many patients will, can you expect to receive? And how long you're going to be serving those patients? You know, and then, you know, thinking through the anticipated length of service. How do you receive and provide referrals? How do you make the data sharing, invoicing, and meet the invoicing and reporting requirements? These are all things that will impact your budget as well as your staffing model. So things to pay attention to because these can vary plan to plan, even within the same region. Next slide, please.
Okay, so I think, thank you so much, Lisa. I think with that, we will turn it over to Rishi Manchand to get us through the beginning of payment for community supports and some key budgeting and payment considerations.
Thanks, Sadhana. And can you event aside, please?
Are you seeing it?
It's, yeah, it's still showing up as, oh, there you go. Yep. Yeah, no worries. Thank you so much. And Lisa, thank you so much for that as well. And I just want to echo what I think we've seen in the chat, some really great dialogue, really great questions and some answers, including answers that some of you are providing to each other. So wanted to keep, encourage that dialogue to keep going. There are also awesome questions in the Q and A that have come up that, some of which were the team on the background here is, is trying to answer. And in some cases, we're marking, we're marking some of those questions to people to answer live in the Q and A section of this. So hi, everybody. Rishi Manchand, I'm CEO at Health Begins. I have the privilege of working with Sadhana and Lisa. The rest of our implementation team also really excited that after I spent a few moments just talking about some key budgeting and payment considerations that we're joined today for some reflections and some tips from Cheryl Winters from Corporation for Supportive Housing. So Cheryl, thanks in advance for joining us today and sharing some of your wisdom in a minute. If we go to the next slide here, really modeling what Lisa did in her section, talking about the delivery requirements and the standard terms and conditions as well as the data sharing and quality oversight components. We wanted to also use the payment elements of the standard terms and conditions as an anchor to help orient some of our conversation today. In the STCs and the standard terms and conditions, when it comes to payment for community supports or formerly known as in lieu of services, you'll see here that there are various indications that DHCS has made for really how the plans need to implement the systems for payment for community support. So much of the content in the standard terms and conditions really is delineating the the types of payment systems and approaches that the plans and the corresponding community support providers need to work on together. You can see, for example, in section A, that the provider is required to record, generate, and send a claim or invoice to the plan for any community support rendered. If the provider submits claims, those claims should be submitted using specifications based on standard codes. Some of you in our last session may recall that we touched upon some of those codes in the first, in one of our regional sessions. And there's some information that we're trying to address through this offering that addressed that question about specifications and codes. It's important to, in that regard, to be able to speak to your plans specifically to make sure that you're aligned with the specifications that they're requiring. In the event that you're unable to submit claims to the plan for any of the community support services, it's important to be able to submit invoices with the minimum data elements defined by DHCS. And there's some information, again, in the link that Sadhana put earlier in the chat. There's some information about some of those necessary data elements. Lisa, I think even spoke to some of those data elements. So key consideration as you're looking at the standard terms and conditions, as you're looking at these systems that DHCS is requiring of the plans is to understand if you're able to provide some minimum necessary data elements. If you go to the next slide, another kind of takeaway before we go into some considerations from the standard terms and conditions is about the ability for the provider to receive payments only for those services that are authorized. And so a question, as you can see on the right here, is as you're entering into or talking, having negotiations with the plan, do you both have a shared understanding of what is an authorized service? In many cases, many of the plans, including those that we're working with in the regional sessions that we're doing in this phase are, have defined very clearly what they're, what they're deeming as authorized services for community supports. There's other recommendations from the requirements from the standard terms and conditions that a CS provider, community support provider must have a system in place to accept payment. And so the question is, do you have a system in place to do that? Are you able, do you have the data systems to be able to store that information to accept payments, but also be able to store and protect protected health information as well? Again, Lisa touched on some of that as well. There are, there are a number of, another consideration here, as you can see, is the timeframe. Under standard terms and conditions, the plan shall pay 90% of all of their clean claims and invoices within 30 days of receipt and 99% of clean claims and invoices within 90 days of receipt. An important consideration, of course, for your CBOs, I'm sure many of you are already considering is whether those timeframes work for your cash flow needs. And if they don't, to be able to make that clear as part of your conversations with the plan as well. There are considerations in the standard terms and conditions for, as you can see on the bottom of the screen, how an MCP can provide expedited payments for urgent community supports with the examples you see there. And so that's an important consideration to talk to the plan about as well. Let's go to the next slide here. Wanted to just highlight then, based on those standard terms and conditions, some important, there are important points about how payments, how to get paid. You know, if we look at the standard terms and conditions, understand the systems for payment that are in those standard terms. What are the implications for many CBOs in terms of how you can get paid? Skipping down to the bottom of this, the community support section on the screen, I think many of you know, and we wanted to make sure that we reinforce for everybody that DHCS has provided pricing guidance to plans to support discussions regarding rates. This guidance is based on a set of research assumptions that DHCS researched, but it's not binding on plans or on community support providers. And so the, the rate, the implication of that is that the rate agreed to between a plan and a community support provider, a CBO such as some of you could fall outside the rate range presented in the pricing guidance. It's important to be aware of the pricing guidance, have conversations that pricing guidance isn't available right now for public consumption, but it's important to talk to your plans about that. One of the important things here, as many of you are aware of now, is that community supports are specifically medically, are defined as medically appropriate and cost-effective alternatives to state plan services. And so the associated funding for these community supports is be built into the capitation payments that plans receive. So plans, in other words, are not receiving additional funds for community supports. An important consideration as you're in conversation with plan for contracting. As you think about the next slide here and the other considerations for payments, we also wanted to highlight that again, based on the pricing guidance, plans will pay contracted providers for provision of services based on the negotiated rates. So if you're wondering whether you have to stick to a defined rate or if those rates are negotiable, recommendation that this TA team is recommending is to be able to talk and negotiate where you can for rates that make sense. And plans are encouraged by the state to tie payments to community support providers to outcomes, especially outcomes related to high-quality care and improved health status. A key consideration, I think, that many of you are now, especially based on the chat we're seeing today, aware of is that the rates that plans offer providers are not standardized and will vary. And we're already seeing this, I think, across the state are going to vary across plans and across counties, depending on a number of different factors. Lisa spoke to some of these, and I think Cheryl's going to speak them a bit more in a minute. The factors that really account for what prices, what rates you'll need. Factors such as the structure of the program itself, the staffing ratios, like Lisa mentioned, the geography, and again, the payment model that your plans are going to be, that the plan that you're talking to is considering for how to pay you. For the next slide here. One, so for all the reasons I mentioned, we're really encouraging CBOs to read the kind of, some of the pricing guidance in general to find helpful information, that information, guidance that DHCS itself has provided for information about ways in which these elements, the program structure, staffing ratios, and so on, can impact pricing and rates. And really want to reiterate this point that with the connections here already, what we're seeing in the chat and obviously through today's conversation, we want to make it easier for you as CBOs to reach out to plans to learn what their rates are and what's applicable for your, for your case. As you're doing that, you can look at examples from the DHCS non-binding pricing guidance. On the right, examples of how this, the variations in staffing ratios or in even caseload, right? Have impact on your, on your rates. I'll read through the example here in the right. Let's take an example of the housing navigation services organization. And if a coordinator salary in that organization is, say, $5,000 a month and they're providing a service to 35 enrollees within the month, the rate paid for that service per person per month must cover 1/35th of that $5,000 monthly wage. In other words, as you calculate that out, $143. Again, this is very high level kind of calculations. Cheryl's going to, I think, give a bit more precise, concrete examples from housing supports. And probably have a lot more specific guidance to share on that. But the point here is an illustrative example is that if the direct care worker, this housing navigation coordinator is able to effectively provide services to not 35, but only 25 enrollees per month, then the rate paid per person per month would need to cover, would be different, would be calculated differently and come at a different rate of $100. The point is case load, case load variation, staffing ratios, program structure, and again, payment model, all impact the pricing and the rates that that you'll want to consider as you're talking to plans. If we go to the next slide. We also want to remind everybody about what are known as incentive payments. Some of you, again, are becoming more and more familiar with this as you're in conversations with plans. The ACS is establishing plan incentives through investments in the infrastructure for this work for enhanced care management and community supports. Those incentive payments are, will be based on quality and performance improvement. And the target of these incentive payments is to drive change at the managed care plan level as well as at the provider level. That includes community support providers. Implementation for these incentive payments is starting up in just about six weeks, beginning of the year. And the payments are directed to plans. But DHCS is encouraging plans to partner and share those incentive dollars with providers who help achieve the targets, the quality and performance improvement targets of the incentive program. This can be a really important consideration as you're in conversations with plans around contracting and negotiating your rates. So when it comes to how to get paid, we wanted to highlight some of those brief considerations, again, anchoring to the standard terms and conditions, but starting to unpack some of the key considerations. If we go to the next slide here, we wanted to kind of bring this to life with somebody who has been doing this just like Lisa for many years and supporting organizations. And so really pleased to introduce Cheryl Winter from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And Cheryl, thank you so much for taking the time today. Wanted to turn it to you to see if you have any comments or tips based on your own work with CSH and the CBOs that you support.
And I am loving the questions and comments and shared problem solving in the chat. It's a great group. It's great to be with all of you. As Rishi said, my name's Cheryl Winter and I work for CSH in Los Angeles. Before coming to Los Angeles last year, I worked with 14 different states that were implementing Medicaid benefits around housing and tenancy support. So one of the community supports being housing navigation and tenancy sustaining services. So have worked with providers doing technical assistance as many homeless service providers and other community-based organizations have entered into this Medicaid Medi-Cal space. And so just so thankful for the lead up. And if you can go to the next slide, Sadhana, thank you. There are a few things that I was taking notes on from the chat questions, you know, why guidelines if not standardized? And then if on your question around that calculation is only considering direct salary, what about operation and administrative costs? Just want to reiterate some things that my colleagues shared of these guidelines are, I think, just as much in part to provide education and framework for the managed care plans that are new to partnering for some of these services as they are for providers to be thinking about, yes, that it should not only cover staffing, but we need to be thinking about the total cost of care for your program and what your total costs are so that as you're negotiating, you, you know which payment model you'd want to advocate for. And if there is a provider community that you are connecting with the other providers in your community about giving feedback to managed care organizations, if they're picking a payment model that's more burdensome. And, and I think understanding what needs to be in place in order to be paid and all that Lisa stressed in terms of data systems, infrastructure, staff to review quality of documentation and to ensure that those clean claims are being submitted on the first time that they're quote unquote clean. These are, this is Medicaid speak, that the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid have defined what a clean claim is. And I'm happy to provide links to some of the quality improvement and assurance. And I'm happy to provide links to some of the quality improvement and assurance trainings that CMS provides around clean claim submission. But there are specific elements in a claim that need to be in every Medicaid documentation. And so the fact that DHCS referred to national standards and national coding is, is getting at that. Where there is flexibility is that because community supports are optional for plans to provide, there is tremendous flexibility that plans have in what they will require in terms of how you submit claims. If there are paper invoices, if it's through a secure electronic filing system, if they want everyone to use the same submission system, you know, if they, they will pay for you to, to enter into and use that data system, there is a lot of flexibility that plans have. And so there's a lot of flexibility that you can have in terms of what you can ask for and how you negotiate. So it's really important that we understand the total cost of care for setting up a new program within your program to provide these community supports. So in addition to understanding, you know, what processes will need to change for your staff and documentation to ensure that you have clean claims, you're also going to want to look at how will those payment models work for you? So really thinking about the, the timeline of from the time a service is provided, Medi-Cal reimburses for services. So you are not necessarily paid for upfront costs or startup costs. It's typical that it reimburses, and it reimburses only for those that were authorized and deemed medically necessary and cost-effective in this case. So what the services that you are providing, it's a reasonable assumption that a certain percent of those will not be considered clean on the first time you invoice for them, and that there will need to be revisions and edits. So thinking through your staffing structure and what supports you may not yet have in place, or how you might want to partner with other agencies that already bill Medi-Cal and may have some of those structures and staff trainings in place is going to be important when you're thinking about your overall total cost of care. This third bullet point around negotiating in advance with a plan. If you know that you are a high-quality service provider and that you can confidently commit to the health outcomes that the plan is hoping that these services will achieve, it's reasonable to, to present to the plan what your startup costs are and to request help and put that into your contract. Whether it be something like, well, I need to hire new staff for this program. And once they are hired, we have this period of onboarding to ensure that they are trauma-informed and practicing as evidence-based and, you know, aligned with our mission. Then it takes time for them to ramp up and get clients referred to them. Then from the time services are provided, it could be thirty days from when we submit invoices, but we might not submit invoices on a daily basis because we don't have staff to do that. So you're going to want to start building out a timeline of what is the time from when you hire and start paying someone's salary to when you'll start getting reimbursement and thinking about that in terms of your startup cost. So it's not just your one-time cost, but it should also include some of your ongoing costs. And seeing if you can negotiate that either into your rates, so that they're higher rates to help pay back some of that startup cost, or acknowledging that in order to provide these services, there is a ramp-up period, and those costs need to be covered, you know, by someone. And then I think this piece around program structure, staffing ratios, the geography of where you are working and how much transportation is involved to provide those services, and the payment model. Payment model largely because the payment model impacts your documentation and the administrative burden on your staff. Those will all differ program by program. So I am going to walk us through a tool and share a link to this tool that might help you in thinking about what your total cost of care is. And then looking at that pricing guidance that DHCS put out, it breaks it down from community support by community support, looking at what is the average staffing ratio that they saw across the state. You may be in an area of the state where there are very few service providers, and you know that in order to provide effective services, the ratio needs to be smaller, even though the reality is you might, they might, they, the managed care plan, might want you to take fifty clients per staff member for housing supports. So you'll want to look at that guidance to help give you a sense of, these are the state averages, but knowing that your region may have some very particular realities that it's facing related to staffing, how long it takes to hire someone for a position, how many qualified practitioners you have, et cetera. And then particularly for the sixty percent of you that said you're looking into the Housing Navigation, Transitions, Short-Term Housing, making sure that this funding, which covers your services, is aligned with the housing resources that you have access to. Because we know that, we know that housing is healthcare. We know that when someone is housed, within eighteen months, there is stability, and you do see cost avoidance from emergency department visits, overnight hospital stays, all sorts of other crisis care services. However, that takes time for someone to stabilize in housing. So you'll want to make sure in your contracts that you are not being held to some sort of health outcome that can only be achieved with housing if you don't also have housing resources to pair. So also working with the plans in terms of who is referred to you and what eligibility criteria or needs that align with the other programs that you might be working with, particularly if you're in a coordinated entry system, will be really important. Next slide. So when thinking about budgeting for the total cost of the care that you are providing, total cost of this new program, you'll want to think about hardware in terms of the basics. So cell phones for staff, internet, if they're out traveling and they're expected to do documentation while in the field, do they have an encrypted, safe and secure way to be taking notes and documentation or to be submitting documents? Any software in terms of data systems that you'll be using or that you should have access to? Are there member fees? Is it user-by-user fees, or is it a new system entirely? And then thinking about consultants. So there are a number of policies and procedures related to being a Medicaid, Medi-Cal provider, related to HIPAA compliance, related to keeping information safe and secure, how you email, who your email server is. And it can be helpful to bring in a consultant that knows this. So technical assistance from partners like Health Begins are going to be really important. And then thinking about those ongoing costs. So Yvonne, your comment about, you know, we can't only think about direct salaries of direct service staff is, is right on. And so we'll want to think through not only your service, frontline service staff and salaries, benefits fringe, but also thinking about over the long term, is this going to be sustainable for multiple years with the cost of living going up? And do we need to negotiate some sort of cost of living adjustment over time? Or is it something that we should negotiate within the incentives, that if we hit certain metrics that we see an increase, and you know in the back of your mind that can go towards cost of living adjustments? And then thinking about business support. So if you do not want to hire or have the capacity to do the, the technical side of reviewing claims, submitting the invoices, receiving the payments, is there a partner that you could subcontract with? And there's a cost to that time of building those partnerships. And then thinking about the quality improvement piece. So there are some requirements of having quality improvement staff and to review your claims, to review your documentation, having a quality improvement plan. Some of this could be included in contract language. So just be mindful of when you see language about being a Medi-Cal contracted provider or a business associate, knowing what is associated with that language and what's required of you at the state level and at the federal level will be important for your quality improvement planning. Next slide. Okay. Oh. Forgot to say next slide. Oh, also, software. So we, Lisa had talked about data and data systems, and knowing what data are you going to be asked to collect? Are you going to be asked to track someone's housing status and report it? Are you going to be asked to track health improvements, or is that something that the managed care plan is already tracking from other reports? And then what data comes back to you? So after you share, ensuring that you also then have enough information coming back to you from the plan to be able to track your own progress. They have very robust data systems that can do a lot of analysis, but often they do not have access to housing information. And so that may be a bridge where you can be a partner with them and sharing that, but then also ensuring, you know, what support can you get from the plan then, so that it's a mutual exchange? I also want to say, understaffing and consultants, it might be helpful to have someone that can help you think through sort of average-case scenario and worst-case scenario in terms of delayed reimbursement and what this could mean for your cash flow. So thinking about the number of staff and how you ramp up, and then working that into your contract around the number of referrals you, you'll want to receive, you know, within the first ninety days of your contract and moving forward, if certain amount of referrals can be guaranteed to you. And the reason for this is that if you hire someone and then their salary is dependent on the number of people they are seeing, and then referrals stop, depending on how long services are authorized for, will really impact that cash flow. So having these conversations with the managed care plan upfront around what they think will be an average authorization period. Is it going to be three months of housing navigation? Is it going to be six months of tenancy support? How many days or months will, will a typical authorization, or is it a person-by-person basis? Because that's really going to impact how you think about assigning clients to staff and sort of this rolling referral process as it relates to cash flow. Next slide. Okay, so the incentives. It's interesting to know, I know that some, some plans are already in conversations with providers about possible, possible incentives related to outcomes, related to reporting, related to the quality of the data that's shared. I think also stressing, you know, understanding what outcomes, so cost effectiveness and, you know, improved health and improved experience are what we think of as this triple aim, the IHI triple aim for medical services. And Medicaid has very much adopted that triple aim. So as that is pushed down to managed care plans, they are not only concerned about cost effectiveness, although that's a very real you know, constraint in this community support, they're also thinking about how our members' health improving and how is their experience of care improving? So if you're able to then look at your caseload sizes versus what payment is being offered in a contract and determine that, you know, in order to meet those outcomes and hit those incentive payments, you need a higher rate, that will be very important to communicate, but to have the evidence base behind you. So there are a number of literature reviews that, I can speak to housing-related supports because that's my background, but happy to share those back with Health Begins to share out with all of you that are interested in those contracts. You know, pointing to the evidence around the smaller caseload sizes, particularly for people who have higher acuity and more intensive care needs, will be really important to demonstrate that this will in fact help you to meet those outcomes. Rather than relying on hitting the outcomes to then get an incentive payment on the backend. I think also when asking questions during the contracting period, it will be important to think about transitions of care. So as someone is referred to you, they may be authorized for three months or five months. You know, you may advocate for them to be reauthorized, but they, it may or may not be approved, depending on if the plan sees it as still medically necessary and cost-effective to provide those services. So advocating for some sort of funding buffer to help cover that staffing transition, knowing that that case manager now will be, you know, submitting fewer invoices, have fewer meetings with clients because that client no longer, you know, they're waiting on their next referral. And also you then may need to transition that member from this community supports program into another housing-related program that your agency offers. And what does that warm handoff look like? And what is the time that it takes to provide that transition of care between case managers, even if it's within the same organization? Expressing why that's important and why there's a monetary cost to that will be really important. This is even more important if it is then transitioning someone from a service that you are providing, and then they will no longer receive that service. If you, you know, if it's still medically necessary but not cost-effective, it's still medically necessary. So you might be working with someone where something is not reauthorized. And so understanding and communicating to the plan the importance of that member care transition and ways that they might be able to incentivize these healthy care transitions as you are coordinating with the enhanced care management team or with the other providers that this member is being served by will be really important. Right. And the next slide. All right. So this is a little screenshot, and I'm going to put it here in the chat. To the CSH Services Budget Tool, this is, this was created as a generic budgeting tool for permanent supportive housing providers. It can be tailored to any of these community supports. And so I, I would love to hear from those of you that aren't a part of that sixty percent looking into the housing-related supports. If you're interested in seeing the tool tailored, we are also working to tailor it to medical respite and recuperative care already. So for those of you doing that, there will be an updated tool coming out soon. But this is a way for you to look at some of those considerations that DHCS put in the guidance around all that impacts a rate, your staffing, your caseload ratios, the transportation costs, the, that total cost of care, that full picture, including your startup costs, including if you need to hire new staff that understand Medi-Cal and claims and billing and, and what you need in your backend business supports and finance supports. So this provides a budget tool that you can enter in your own program's information, and then it creates a summary tab that shows you what the rate is for that program per member per month. So for the number of people that you are planning to serve with the staff ratios, as well as fee for service. So within a fifteen-minute unit of service, which is typically how fee for service is reimbursed, as well as a per diem rate. So this will help you to then compare it to what's being offered in the contracts. And it can be a helpful tool just to see, you can kind of play around with it and say, okay, well, what if we did a ratio of one to thirty-five or one to twenty-five? How would that impact the cost to us as our total cost of care? It allows you to also put in information related to staff trainings and any other operating costs other than personnel costs as well. So happy to follow up with anyone that is looking for this to be edited, but wanted to make this available as a resource. And with that, I think I'll head it back to Sudden.
Thank you so much, Cheryl, and thank you, Rishi and Lisa also for sharing with us today. We, we have so many questions, so many answers through the chat and through the Q and A box. And so I am going to actually maybe stop share here and give us the opportunity to get through a few of these questions before we, we close out today. And I know a few came in through the Q and A box, maybe we'll, we'll start there. And yeah, go ahead.
Can I just put one forward? It came in the chat, and it's related to some of the things that came in the Q and A earlier. And it's a question that Kitty Bailey put in. It looks like, Lisa, you've already addressed it, but I also want to open it up to Lisa and Cheryl to see if they have additional comments. It's the question about the, ensuring that, that organizations have full caseloads, especially for housing navigators. That's a significant concern for our first year in particular. And Kitty was asking for advice. Lisa wanted to ask if you wanted to just voice over what you shared and also invite Cheryl, especially with a Corporation for Supportive Housing background, if you had any thoughts about how to make sure that there's appropriate guarantees to have a full caseload in the first year of operations.
Happy to. You know, we get asked this question by CBOs all the time because sometimes these contracts they're getting, you know, don't have a minimum caseload. So it's a very reasonable question to ask the plans if they can guarantee you a minimum caseload. And if you dip below that, that they'll still pay you at that minimum, because that's the level you need to be able to maintain your current capacity. If you're trying to build more capacity, this is the time to talk to your plan partners because they're putting together their investment plans on how they're going to build local capacity and help build local infrastructure. and help build local infrastructure. And so it's really important to talk to your plans, talk to the county who is also playing a role in this and really figure out what is going on locally to understand what the opportunities are. And, you know, don't be shy about pushing the plans to understand how long they're expecting you to be serving each patient so that you understand the length of service, to take all of that into account as part of your budgeting. Cheryl, you probably have some thoughts here too.
I echo, I echo that you just said. And the piece about like if, let's say the caseload is one to 25 and I was only referred seven people and I already hired, hired a staff member, having the conversation now about that. And, and you could use the services budget tool or maybe you just know what it costs to support a new staff member with onboarding and. But I think, I haven't seen the minimum in contracts as much as a commitment around the referral process. And I think the strength of CBOs is that we are connected and do know many people who may be eligible for referrals. And I think the challenge might be knowing which plan that person is assigned to. And if you're only contracted with one plan or, you know, two plans. But I think having a conversation around referrals and how you can be involved in the referral-making process and maybe even in the authorization process could be important for that too.
Completely agree. And another thing to really think about too is pay attention to your payment terms. Because in your contracts, you will be contracted to provide a set of services, but sometimes you're not providing all of those services all within the same month. And so there may be some minimum touch requirements or contact requirements that you need to make, especially under a per member per month structure. You know, sometimes the plans want to at least know that you're, you've made the attempt to try to contact that individual to provide those services. And you'll be paid based on documentation of certain numbers of attempts. So, you know, you need to both pay attention to your scope services as well as the payment terms for how you will be able to be billing and capturing that billing as part of your invoicing process.
Thank you both. I think there are another, there's another kind of set of questions around intermediaries or hubs. And I know Lisa, you addressed this in the, the chat a couple of times where I'm wondering if maybe I see a question in the Q and A about how CIEs may facilitate CBO engagement with local CalAim implementations. And I see in the chat as well about if an MCP is contracting with a central hub. And so if you could just kind of address that class of question altogether. And just a note for folks, I know we're getting late and the end of the day, we'll, we'll try to wrap up here in 15 minutes and get to as many questions as we can in that time.
Let's tackle the community information exchange first because I think that's a really critical piece. And if you are in a county that is looking at building one of these exchanges, it could be called a CIE, Community Information Exchange. Some, in some counties, it's called a SHE, Social Health Information Exchange, combining social data, social care data as well as health data. So, you know, oftentimes in those instances, somebody within the county, either the county or some entity is sponsoring that exchange. And so if it's already been built, you want to go to that exchange and talk to them and understand what functions you can leverage to either coordinate with other providers or to get the data information, either receiving information or for you to send information out to other providers or to the plans. If, and in some communities, they're just starting to build these exchanges. And so in those instances, you'll need to have a short-term strategy because those exchanges haven't been built. And you'll need to understand what exactly is being built and how you can plug into that. Because once it's built, it's going to make your lives a lot easier in terms of coordination, in terms of having access to data. I'll give you an example. Alameda County built one of these exchanges and it's amazing because they're able to tell in real time, shelter, for example, shelter capacity and how many people in real time are, is in a specific shelter and how many additional spaces they have. And during COVID, this was such a powerful tool, they did not lose one client to COVID through their project room key. And that is a huge accomplishment. They did not have one client pass away due to COVID, which is huge. So, you know, you'll want to know if you have an exchange in your community or if it's being built. If it's being built, you'll want to have a short-term strategy for how you share data until it's built and then plug in once it's built. Because once it's built, that's going to make your staff lives easier and your organization's lives easier because it's going to facilitate a lot of the coordination. I'll pause there in case Cheryl or anybody wants to add about the data exchange.
No, I think that's really helpful. And I, you know, I do also welcome if folks in the audience, I know there was a lot of kind of information sharing among folks in the audience. And so if you want to come off mute with any, anything that you're seeing in your community, that would be welcome as well. And I know, I know Kitty, you in particular were responding to, to that question for San Diego. And so if you're still on, you know, feel free to unmute and jump in on that. I will also take a second just to answer kind of some questions that came in about recording, about slides. We will be sharing all of that after this session. And so you should receive that in your email tomorrow morning just related to recording and slides.
Kitty isn't on still. San Diego is a perfect example of a community that has one of these exchanges. And so you'll want to go and talk to your, you know, the San Diego exchange because they may have built a lot of the communication pathways and ways for you to connect up with other providers.
That's great. Thank you, Lisa. I know there were also just, you know, a number of resources shared through this presentation from, you know, our presenters as well as from other attendees in the chat. And so I wanted to just draw attention to Cheryl sharing the, the tool from CSH. So we'll, we'll capture all these and include them in the email as well, but wanted folks to be able to access that. I know Lisa, you shared, you know, how folks can find their local Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan and the way to contact them as well. And we, we put out a number of the DHCS resources that were mentioned in today's conversation, the standard terms and conditions, as well as the non-binding, binding pricing guidance. So wanted to, to just raise those up. I can, I think we have time for one more question before we wrap up. I don't know if either you, Lisa or Cheryl saw a question that you wanted to raise up, either that you had answered in, in chat but wanted to raise up to the group or I can, I can select the final one. So.
There was a question in the Q and A from Nancy Geis. Do the hubs need to be counties or CBOs or can for-profit brokers be part of CalAim? So Nancy, there's no prohibition for who can be the hub. It can be the county, it can be a CBO, it could be another healthcare provider, it can be a for-profit broker. There isn't a limitation. But whoever is the hub has to meet all the requirements, not only in the standard terms and conditions. They have to meet all the DHCS requirements as well as all the plan requirements. And they are responsible and will have legal liability for ensuring all of their subcontracted entities are performing the program appropriately as defined and spelled out in the special terms and conditions and their contracts. They'll also be responsible in many cases for invoicing on behalf of their subcontracted entities, reporting, data collection, you know, data sharing. So it, there's a lot that goes into becoming a hub, but there is no prohibition for for-profit brokers from becoming one. Not currently at least.
Lisa, I'd love to build on that. And I, I think you set it up really wonderfully both in this, this answer, but also your prior one to the, the other CIE answer as well. I think that there is an interesting emergence in California, particularly of the information exchanges, as well as the kind of intermediary hubs to handle managed services, you know, in some cases, including working with plans to handle the claims. And I think it's, it's worth highlighting, I want to really underscore what you brought, what you brought up, especially I think Cheryl, you as well in your earlier comments. And I, I came up early in the chat in this conversation. Many of the CBOs that are online, if you're still online right now, are probably after today. And, you know, in the course of the next several weeks, considering whether to engage in direct contracting. A lot of the information today was about, you know, how to factor in your costs and think about the pricing and everything that's required for entering into those direct contracts. But many may have viable pathways to explore indirect contracting mechanisms using intermediaries or hubs in that way. And I think there are a variety of different models, including some of the great ones we're seeing in the chat. Lisa, building on what you mentioned as well, we know in San Joaquin, another example is the Pathways Community Hub model that's early in its days, as you said, Lisa, just starting out. There are what's happening in San Diego. I think Kitty Bailey's been really wonderfully active in highlighting that. We saw, very, so I'll thank you in the chat as well for highlighting the way Unite Us is also trying to step in in this regard. So I, I think what's really exciting and maybe challenging as well for CBOs is seeing that as much as there is a lot of opportunity here to potentially contract directly with plans, there is also indirect opportunities. And the exciting part is that there are a number of different opportunities that are really becoming emergent in different counties of ways to engage with intermediaries. This, it's a strong interest that we've had from the get-go of putting this partnership development network together to identify and create a space for intermediary developers to start to, to connect with CBOs and with plans across the state. We, we think that there's a lot of lessons to be learned over the course of the next three months, six months, 12 months about how to best structure the intermediaries, including the information exchanges, Lisa, to your point, to be able to support this type of work. And I think we're going to see a lot of progress in that, especially over the next year.
Thank you, Rishi. And so I think we will start closing out here. I know there was kind of a class of questions related to ECM that were showing up in chat and Q and A and wanted to just address that, you know, this TA provision that we're embarking on over, you know, the next really month and a half is, is not covering ECM. And so we're, we're not covering, you know, really guidance related to that through this. But it is something that, you know, we're, we're thinking about for future cohorts or for future work. And so we'll, we'll keep you posted as that involves. I will also just get to next step. So, you know, feel free to reach out to us with any questions or feedback. At the end of the session, there will be a survey that pops up on screen and that will be enormously helpful for us. I did see that some of the questions that came through were about asking for specific examples or, you know, things like that. The survey allows you to, to input, you know, what you'd like to see in future sessions. You know, kind of how, where you are in terms of contracting now, based on the conversation we had today and what additional TA you would be interested in receiving. So please, there are about 14 questions, but shouldn't take more than just a couple of minutes to run through them. So really encourage you to fill out that survey so we can continue to improve our TA provision here. We do have, like I mentioned at the top of the call, two statewide sessions. Today was the first. We'll have our second one on December 16th, about a month from now. And then we have those regional sessions that are by invitation only for the four counties, for CBOs in the four counties that we mentioned. If you are a CBO in one of those counties, please get in touch with us if you'd like to be included in that effort. And we can see how we can include you before the end of the year. So with that, I, I would like to conclude here. Thank you so much for, to our presenters. This was wonderful, valuable information. We, we saw a lot of validation in chat that this was really helpful. And so thank you all for, for your engagement. Now I did forget this last slide here where we also thank the project team. So thanks to Rare Health Group, our project partner on this, who helped with the creation of and the co-development of this, of course, to CHCF, our funder, as well as our implementation partners, which includes Lisa and our special guest presenter today, Cheryl. So really appreciate all of you, appreciate all of you who stayed on the line for this hour and a half of really technical information. But we'll have a few more bites of that, that apple before we're, we're done. So thank you all and look forward to the next time.